Shot and killed in an attempted robbery. The gun that was used to shoot him had been stolen from a home just two weeks prior to the shooting. I often wonder what might have happened if that gun had been turned in at a buyback instead of sitting at a home unsecured.
And that's exactly why city leaders have been promoting the Gun Buyback Program.
My children are growing up and they're having kids and I just, this is just a good way to make sure that they don't have a gun around the house.
478 guns were recently collected at two-city gun buyback events. It's a program that lets individuals surrender weapons anonymously.
We offer up to $100 for every gun that's turned in, and if it meets the California definition of an assault weapon, we pay up to $200 per gun. We also get machine guns, we get short-barreled rifles, and they'll get up to $200 per gun for those. All of the guns that we collect, we run the serial numbers and we identify any guns that were taken and that were stolen. And the reason we run those gun serial numbers is to make sure that any of those reported stolen guns get back to the rightful owners. In the following week, we take all of the guns that we collect from the gun buyback and we melt them down.
174 handguns, 166 rifles, 103 shotguns, and 35 weapons that could be classified as assault weapons were collected.
And so, we have worked aggressively to continue to expand the work that we're doing in schools, keep people out of violence, out of gangs, keep guns away from them.
The Gun Buyback Program was created in 2009, and since then, officials say there has been a significant decreased rate in gun violence.
In 2008, there was about 1,600, little over 1,600 people shot, not shot at, shot, in the city of Los Angeles. We're on pace this year to be between 700 and 800, and last year, we were at barely over 1,000.
In 2017, the mayor set a goal to get at least 20,000 guns off the streets of LA in five years.
Last year alone, we took more than 7,300 guns off the streets of Los Angeles. That puts us on fast track to meet the goal I set last year.
Mayor Garcetti has signed laws that ban large-capacity ammunition magazines and require guns to be stored and locked at home when not in use. In downtown Los Angeles, I'm Rasha Goel for LA This Week.
For more information about gun buyback events, you can check out lamayor.org/buyback or call 877 LAPD 247. An intersection in the valley is named after a police officer and Marine for his selfless service both in and out of uniform. Gil Reyes reports from the special honor in Winnetka.
May we be reminded of those who have freely gifted us of their own lives.
A military flyby, one of several tributes for fallen Marine and LAPD Officer Joshua Cullens. His parents were there for the honors in Winnetka.
But I really am hoping this ceremony will be about my neighbors and...
The community.
The community.
The city dedicated the intersection of Quakertown Avenue and Golt Street as Joshua Cullens Way. The staff and family of St. Martin's School across the street pushed for the signed dedication.
It took such an interest to fight to get this street named after him, it breaks my heart. It really does.
Unbelievable.
Staff Sergeant Joshua Cullens had served with the U.S. Marine Corps for 10 years. After becoming a reservist with the Marine Corps, he joined the LAPD in 2008. In 2010, he was back in Afghanistan for a second tour of duty where he was killed by a roadside bomb.
While serving in the Marines, he earned almost a dozen medals and awards, including two combat action ribbons and also a Purple Heart.
Desire for service, desire to make a difference, desire to protect others, but most importantly, it was his desire to be part of something greater than just one person, something greater than himself.
Relatives say Cullens taught his two younger brothers the importance of looking out for others and each other. His brothers had attended St. Martin's as children, where Cullens inspired other young people to give back.
He used to come here and talk to the kids.
And he was a pen pal, and he would bring all his gear, and they'd write him letters when he was deployed, he'd pick up the boys.
And now, a permanent reminder for future generations on the importance of service. In Winnetka, I'm Gil Reyes for LA This Week.
Cullens is the second LAPD officer to die while serving in Afghanistan. The first was SWAT Officer Robert Cottle, who also passed away in 2010. Well, you often hear about schoolkids dropping out in Watts, but one high school has turned that story on its head. Not only are all its students graduating, they're all getting that acceptance letter from their college of choice. Anna Marcos brings us the good news from Verbum Day High School.
I tell my students, we are more than janitors. We are professional executives for the school of young, black, brown, and district.
A teacher's spoken-word performance may be part of the entertainment, but it's entertainment with a serious purpose on this commitment day at Verbum Day High School.
And we are doing big things, big things.
The students, parents, and educators at Verbum Day are celebrating a huge victory. All 57 of the graduating seniors, 100% of these young men of color who live in Watts, have been accepted into college, and most have been accepted into several colleges and universities.
As you know, 1 in 3 black men will go to jail in their lifetime, so I really appreciate the effort brought in by Verbum Day by allowing me to become a better man and teach me life's lessons as a man.
I didn't always see myself being here, but I'm thankful to God that I'm in this position. I plan on doing big things in life.
It's the 11th straight year the school has hit the 100% college acceptance marker.
It's setting that new narrative that yes, if you are a young African-American, Latino, senior in high school, you are going to college, and this is something that we've embraced here in Watts over the years.
Verbum Day accepts students regardless of their ability to pay, often even if they have a less-than-brilliant academic past. What they must have is a willingness to work hard and turn their lives around. This graduation year, both the school and the students get an A for passing the test with flying colors. I'm Anna Marcos for LA This Week.
More than half the students will be the first in their families to go to college. Like LA Dodger Jackie Robinson, who broke baseball's color barrier, these students also shattered barriers. They're the first in their families to also go to college. Gil Reyes reports on a winning team effort from Dodger Stadium.
How are you, Abigail? Nice to meet you. How's your... Proudly wearing his school colors, Columbia University alumnus and LA Mayor Eric Garcetti offered words of wisdom to a special incoming class, the first students in their families to attend college. The young people gathered at Dodger Stadium on College Signing Day.
Be fearless, be humble, learn to listen, and lead with love.
Around 100 first-generation college students attended. The LA Dodgers Foundation and teammates like Minds Matter of Los Angeles helped them. Minds Matter of Los Angeles provides free counseling and weekend tutoring through most of high school.
When I first was introduced to the organization, I said to myself, "Who does that?" I mean, that's an intense commitment, and some of the volunteers who I've met, they have families, they have young children, they have other commitments on Saturday, yet they have spent three years with their mentees, helping them on their way to college.
And the goal is to have them stay in college. The California Dream Act allows undocumented immigrant college students who arrived in the U.S. as minors to receive financial aid. The law was authored by UCLA alumnus and Dodger Stadium's councilman Gilbert Sadio during his days in the state legislature.
And one thing that drives me crazy is that people don't apply. I'm like, "Are you kidding me? I spent 18 years of my life to get this done, and you don't fill out the application? Oh, I don't have any money to go to college." What do you mean? There's like millions of dollars sitting there for you to apply, so please, I want you to apply. It's so, so important to me.
The deadline to apply this year has passed, but there's always next year. Learn more about college financial aid at dream.c sac.ca.gov. I'm Gil Reyes for LA This Week.
This year's applications are far fewer than last year's. Speculation is, people are fearful of applying because of the Trump administration's crackdown on undocumented immigrants. Well, it's an opportunity for access to some hands-on training with the Los Angeles Fire Department. Rasha Goel has more on how local young women across Southern California are learning about what it takes to be a firefighter.
The look of excitement on these young ladies' faces says it all. They're eager to prove they've got what it takes to become part of something bigger than themselves and learn how to possibly save lives. Through a two-day camp, these teens ages 14 to 18 will learn about the fundamentals of firefighting and emergency medical services, and what it takes to be part of the Los Angeles Fire Department.
It's good to learn new things and like, it's fun, and like, you get to meet new people, and they're all friendly here.
They're excited to learn about some of the tools and equipment, climbing ladders, they get to use our hose, we teach them first aid and CPR, and do some physical fitness with them to introduce them to some of the challenges they're going to face as a firefighter.
The camp was held at LAFD Recruiting Academy 81 in Panorama City. Hopes are, creating an interest at a young age will inspire these women to join the LAFD, a department that is looking to create a more diverse team.
We have a goal to get to 5% of our department, 5% female, female, by the end of 2020, calendar year 2020. Right now, today, we're at about 3.2%.
Some young ladies already know how they want to make an impact as a firefighter, while others are enjoying the experience.
I'm always motivated in being the first female, always being, especially as a minority female, it's good to, you know, show others that it's possible and that it can be done, and to, you know, open the door for other, other younger people.
The camp also serves as a motivation to inspire these young women to do anything they aspire.
We can become firefighters, we can do anything that men can do, we just have to believe in ourselves, and the sisterhood starts today, ladies.
This is the second LAFD camp being held in the 6th District. I'm Rasha Goel for LA This Week.
The LAFD is currently hiring and accepting applications until June 29th and looking to add more women and diversity to the department. Do you have a product or service Los Angeles could use? Well, the city wants to do business. Gil Reyes reports from LA's Vendor Fair, which connects companies to city agencies looking to hire.
Think about companies like Applied LNG. They deliver renewable liquid natural gas, so LA sanitation trucks run with less pollution. Or businesses like Hillti. They supply cutting-edge tools to the LA Harbor Department for safer, more efficient construction around the port. Those companies and more promote their wares at LA City's Vendor Fair outside City Hall.
This is one we have every year that we bring out, probably one of the largest ones in LA County, where we have, you know, over 100 vendors coming in to showcase their supplies and their services, and other vendors trying to also become partners with some of our main vendors to do business with the city of Los Angeles.
LA City's General Services Department hosts the event, helping companies with the application process to help secure contracts with the city of Los Angeles. The city purchases half a billion dollars in commodities a year. Yours could be next. Have a product or service the city could use? Learn more about opportunities at gsd.lacity.org, then hit the Supply Services icon. I'm Gil Reyes for LA This Week.
Well, it's a thank you for some Valley firefighters in the form of breakfast burritos. Councilmember Monica Rodriguez turned chef for a day, and she had some help from a very special pint-sized celebrity master chef. Anna Marcos has the scoop.
Hi, good morning, everyone. Councilwoman Monica Rodriguez here with our superstar chef, Chef Emily from...
A little live Facebook action is a vital ingredient when you're a council member volunteering to cook some grub for Valley firefighters at Station 81, and you've got a pint-sized celebrity chef helping you.
Well, I was very proud of the fact that we have a local chef in Chef Emily that was able to compete successfully on MasterChef Junior, and I really, you know, for me, it's really important that we highlight the successes of some of the youth in our community, and I think Emily is a reflection of that.
Yes, she is. Emily Chavez of Fox's MasterChef Junior Show with Gordon Ramsay.
I think I got picked because I'm cute, and also because I think I'm really creative.
And she's very capable of making the firefighters some...
Breakfast burritos.
That's right. Oh, and throw in some bacon. It's just a way to thank these firefighters for their everyday work saving lives. Let's see how those burritos are doing.
Nice stuff. Alright.
Normally firefighters are on their own for breakfast, so this is a pretty special treat, and this here looks a heck of a lot better breakfast fare than this, peanut butter and jelly sandwiches.
Yeah, we get the food. Happy to eat.
Okay, it's chow time, and these hearty souls are about to get their taste buds woken up.
Homemade, fresh pico de gallo, just hitting the spot. Outstanding.
Good gallo, Fred. Yeah, it's got a little heat to it, so I like it.
But normally, what do you eat for breakfast? If you're here.
Thank you, I'm all. Normally, I use the oatmeal.
Oatmeal, blah. Burrito, yeah. Looks like this special breakfast makes the perfect recipe for hard-working firefighters. I'm Anna Marcos for LA This Week.
Master Chef Emily says she plans to open up a restaurant with her cousin when she grows up. Did you miss out on receiving a high school diploma? Well, no worries, here's your chance to get one. For the past few years, the LA City Library has offered free accredited classes online. As Gil Reyes reports, more than 100 students have graduated from this popular program and counting.
It's a second chance at a high school diploma, a second chance at life. The LA City Library graduates its latest online class.
Right now, I'm looking for colleges to enroll for a vocational nurse program to become an RN, a registered nurse.
The library's Career Online High School Program launched in 2014.
We were the first public library to have a program and the first public library to have a graduating class.
Students take the online courses at their own time, usually at home. They're also paired with academic coaches for guidance. It usually takes a year and a half to complete the program, and it's free.
Today, we celebrate our 100th graduate of this program, so don't ever think that you have to settle for the job, for the education, for the situation that you have. You can come to Los Angeles Public Library, get that high school degree, and the world is like a door opening up to you.
And the program's been really wildly successful, and we're looking to spread the word and let others know. People who are 19 and older, residents of the city, were very eager to open the program and encourage others to participate.
Earn your high school degree online. Find out more at lapl.org/chohs. I'm Gil Reyes for LA This Week.
The program is so popular that this year, the LA Public Library is planning a second high school graduation set for the fall. City leaders move forward with a new budget, LA Mayor Eric Garcetti talks tech, and the LAPD reaches out to the LGBTQ community. All this in City View. After nearly three weeks of budget meetings and input from city departments and the public, the LA City Council, led by Budget Chair Paul Krikorian, approved a $9.9 billion city budget for fiscal year 2018-2019, which begins July 1st. General fund revenues for 2018-19 are projected to be $6.17 billion. That's an increase of $339.5 million, or 5.8% from the 2017-2018 budget. The budget includes $440 million in housing and services for the homeless, the highest amount ever budgeted. The budget also sets aside $1.6 billion for the LAPD, enough funds to maintain the police force above its current level of at least 10,000 sworn officers, and additional money to hire more civilian staff. It also provides enough to hire 200 firefighters and includes $41 million for sidewalk repairs, an increase of $10 million. Mayor Garcetti took part in a technology conference geared towards the next generation of tech entrepreneurs to connect, collaborate, create, and receive advice. The event, called Urban Tech Connect, was put on by Plug-in South LA, a growing tech community in South LA focused on creative technologies. The mayor tweeted that LA is a global hub for tech and innovation, and we must ensure opportunities are available for all of our communities. Proud to partner with Plug-in South LA to empower a more inclusive tech sector and the next generation of entrepreneurs. The LAPD Hollywood Station recently held an open house for the LGBTQ community as an opportunity to meet with officers and learn more about resources that are available, such as victim assistance services and crime prevention information. The open house also gave the department a chance to learn more about the community it serves.
It's about coming together, learning about each other's differences and diversity that makes us stronger.
Residents in Silmar have been calling for safer equestrian street crossings for years, and now, Councilwoman Monica Rodriguez has teamed up with the LA Department of Transportation to put in a smart crosswalk that's both horse and people-friendly. Anna Marcos takes us there.
Horses and humans can now cross this highway in Silmar and feel a lot safer, even when they butt up against motorists. The reason, a new smart crosswalk with flashing lights put in by Councilmember Monica Rodriguez.
Now I know that I can come through here and cross safely.
Sometimes I ride with my granddaughters, and it's always been a problem because the cars, they're not expecting to see a horse, and they're coming at a high rate of speed, especially in that turn, they can't see us.
People do like their horses in this area of trails and hills, but sometimes cars and horses don't share the road well.
About four years ago, we had an incident that a gentleman was crossing the road, just like you see every gentleman that crosses the road, was, was, was hit by a car on the horse. The horse was instantly killed. The gentleman spent at least three months in, at Olive View Hospital.
Public safety is always a priority in the district that I represent, whether it's making sure that our pedestrians are safe where they're crossing, whether bicyclists are safe when they're coexisting amongst our roads, and when our equestrians are trying to cross safely.
Even the push button is equestrian-friendly. You don't even have to get off your horse to press the button for the flashing lights.
I think this is fabulous. This is like, we've been waiting for this. You see how many horses come by here, and it's every day.
Still, we saw that some motorists will have to go through a learning curve before they learn to stop for the flashing lights and the horses.
It's new. It's going to take some time.
Look for the gap in the vehicles, then press the button to activate the warning lights before beginning to cross the street.
So, rein in your horses and make sure the motorists see you and stop before you gallop off into the sunset. I'm Anna Marcos for LA This Week.
Rodriguez has completed this crosswalk within her first eight months in office. Well, here's your chance to network with your peers and get some valuable advice at the annual Latina Conference. A Senior Wellness Fair offers free health screenings and other services, and get ready to check out some incredible rides at a car show. All this and this week's Things to Do. Councilwoman Karen Price will be hosting the Third Annual Latina Conference. This will be a day of networking, education, and empowerment for women of color. The free conference will feature leaders and experts working in the areas of civic engagement, education, health, immigration, social justice, women's rights, and much more. Like last year, attendees will be treated to motivational speakers, insightful panel discussions, live entertainment, and essential resources and valuable information. Thanks to the generosity of CD9 Partners, guests will also receive complimentary breakfast, lunch, and other goodies. The conference takes place Saturday, June 2nd, from 10:00 a.m. to 3:00 p.m. at Los Angeles Trade Technical College, located at 400 West Washington Boulevard. To register, visit muheresempoweredforsuccess.com. The Department of Wreckham Parks, Councilmember Mike Bonin, and the Neighborhood Council of Westchester, Playa, and Delray Neighborhood Council will be hosting a free Senior Health and Wellness Fair. The fair will include free screenings, entertainment, giveaways, food, and refreshments. It all takes place Saturday, June 2nd at 10:00 a.m., located at the Westchester Senior Citizen Center at 8740 Lincoln Boulevard. The LAPD Valley Traffic Division is hosting its 15th Annual Still Saving Lives Car Show. Plenty of awesome and exotic cars and LAPD vehicles will be on display, and kids will get a chance to ask the officers questions. It's a free, community-family-friendly event that hopes to improve relationships between community and law enforcement. If you'd like to register a show car, visit vtac-vtd.org. And that's a look at some things to do. Well, that's going to do it for this edition. I'm Yana Kane from All of Us here at LA This Week. Thanks for joining us. A reminder that you can catch us online at lacityview.org. You can also follow and like us on Facebook. We'll see you back here next week for more of LA This Week. of LA This Week.
of LGBT Pride, we come in with festive music. Our musical act canceled at the last minute. So, Mr. Buscaino, could you sing us in?
Okay, now, eyes on Mr. Buscaino.
Thank you, Mr. President. Before we start, our apologies for starting late, although I do want to note for the record, despite there being rumors of gay time where we're always late, it was the straight council members who caused us to run overtime outside. So, we have here today for our eighth LGBT Pride Heritage Month celebration, a collection of people that are LGBT Los Angeles. You can see them all behind me. Please give them all a round of applause.
Mr. Bonin, I'm gonna interrupt you for one second because it was my plan to have my honorees come up here and sit with me and help me conduct today's business. So if
So if I could get Mira and Shannon, come on up here. Then just give them—these are my honorees. A couple from the La Merck Park area of my district. Liz, bring them up here. Sorry, Mr. Bonin, back to you.
That's okay. You're always welcome to pull rank. I want to draw attention before we start, though. Where are the—the students from Santee High, from the Gay Straight Alliance? Come on up, come on up. Can you stand over here where we can see you? I—I want to draw particular attention to these young people from Santee High because they are among the first generation that grow up when the LGBT community could serve in the military. They are the first generation able to grow up where gay men, lesbians, bisexuals, members of the transsexual community are featured on television, in books, in public media, in the public consciousness. They are the first generation to be able to grow up at a time when we are legally allowed to be married. They are the first generation to be able to grow up and to fight the battle they're fighting so that people can have dignity when they do something as simple as using the restroom in their school. Times have dramatically changed since I was a child, since Mr. O'Farrell was a child, and since all of you grew up. And things changed because of people coming out of the closet, living their lives, and telling their stories. And we celebrate that today. The first openly LGBT member of the U.S. Senate, Tammy Baldwin, said a number of years ago at a gay rights demonstration, "There will not be a magic day. There will not be a magic day in which we wake up and it's now okay to express ourselves publicly. We make that day by doing things publicly until it is simply the way things are." And that is what happened. People simply expressed who they were and lived their lives. They told their families, they told their friends, they told their coworkers who they are, and walls and barriers and obstacles came tumbling down. It ain't over. We're seeing now retrenchment, particularly against the transsexual community. We are seeing the ugliness reasserting itself. But we are out, we are proud, we are queer, we are here, and we are everywhere. So, yeah, some celebrities make a very big difference, a very big difference. But what makes a difference in our neighborhoods, in our city, in our families, are just the normal, everyday people that we live with. And so, we're surrounded today by heroes and icons from the LGBT community who are cops, who are pastors, who are artists, who are social workers, who are tech workers, who are teachers, and, yes, who are students. And it is because of you, all of you, that we are where we are today, that we are celebrating everything we have won, and that we are ready for the next fight and the next battle. Thank you. Thank you, Mike. And I also want to—to welcome everyone to Pride Month here at Los Angeles City Hall. All of our colleagues and everyone in the chamber, welcome, welcome, welcome. Previously, we—we awarded all the recipients and all the honorees of the individual council members, and we're going to mention all of those—all of those names in just a moment. But I'm reminded of what one recipient said out there, who is same generation that I'm in, and he talked about when he was a young—a young rookie cop in the seventies, the—the challenges of having to be closeted just to get hired by the LAPD and what that meant, and he felt abnormal. Did that buzzer go off right when I said abnormal? So, I just got to say, and I want to hear—hear it in the House, who here is abnormal and proud of it? I want to acknowledge our LGBT City Department managers attending today. There are many of them. They proudly serve our communities and provide an example of leadership for our LGBTQ youth. I also want to acknowledge how we raise awareness about the people institutions making a difference in our communities. Eighth year in a row here, as Mike mentioned. This is a time to reflect on how far we've come as a community, connected through pride, which is this year's theme, and how far we still have to go. While we celebrate today, there's work happening here on this council every day to empower people to live openly and authentically and thrive in the city of Los Angeles. Here are some of the things that Mike and I are involved with—with all of you, our colleagues. The midnight stroll in Hollywood. Last week, we approved funding in the budget with oversight in my committee and, of course, the Budget and Finance Committee, to continue our efforts to do outreach to the transgender community, living on the streets in Hollywood or working in the shadows of Hollywood. Real funding to make sure that we can, for the first time, provide overnight beds for this community, and that's moving forward as well. And working with the Transgender Advisory Committee, Council, rather, and the Human Relations Commission, the City Council approved a first-of-its-kind report on issues affecting the transgender community, including homeless, supportive services, housing, HIV and AIDS care, and job creation. This work is ongoing, and there is definitely more to come on that. Our educational centers, with the Los Angeles Public Library, you see this wonderful milestone in LGBT history, worked with John Zabo and the library system and One Archives on developing a traveling cultural exhibit to recognize the contributions of the LGBTQ community in Los Angeles. These banners will be hosted in fifteen branches across the city, one in each council district. So I want to thank John Zabo and his team, and Eric Adomian from One Archives, for working with my office on this project. And we have City of L.A. resolutions in support of pending state bills. There are nine of them. Introducing today, Mike and I are introducing a resolution in support of these nine state bills that aim to protect the rights of transgender individuals, providing specialized health care for our youth, and foster care, and direct more resources to provide in-service training for our teachers regarding resources available to the transgender community. In Los Angeles, Mr. President, as you know, we embrace everyone. And coming up, my office is hosting an exhibit in the Bridge Gallery during the month of June to recognize LGBT Olympic athletes. The exhibit is in collaboration with outsports.com Getty Images in the Los Angeles Public Library, and it will be open Monday through Friday from 8:30 a.m. to 5:00 p.m. We're going to have a dedication and a ceremony opening that exhibit, and it's probably in about a week, if I'm not mistaken, but we'll announce that date very soon. And now I'm going to turn it back over to Mike Bonin.
Thank you. So we have a couple other elected officials who we are so glad to have with us today. We are very, very fortunate that Los Angeles has not one, not two, but three LGBT elected officials. And when Mitch and I got elected, we were thinking, oh, you know, we're going to be groundbreaking, we'll be the first two elected at the same time. Well, we got outdone because this guy came into the race and he became the first citywide LGBT elected official, so we get nothing in the history books. And Ron Galperin has been a—a champion and an icon of our community for a very long time, before he was in public office. He and his husband are a powerful example of—of love and strength for all of us, and I want to welcome Ron to—come on up.
Good morning, Mr. President. Good morning, everybody who's assembled here, and thank you so very much to our council members, Mike Bonin, Mitch O'Farrell. It's really an honor to serve with you as part of the gay trio at City Hall. Today is a—a special day. We really get to recognize Angelenos who make such a difference in the fight for equality and justice for all. And I'm particularly proud—you mentioned my husband, Zach, who's here. Give it up for Zach, please. He's—he's my own personal rabbi, and, you know, they say that at the dinner table, you're not supposed to talk about two things, politics or religion, and we like to joke, what else would we talk about? Los Angeles is home, of course, to the second-largest LGBT population in the country, and we are a place where members of the LGBTQ+ communities have been flocking for many years to Los Angeles because of our vibrancy, our creativity, because of the fact that we welcome people here. And I still remember the day that I had the honor of—of walking down the steps of City Hall, hand-in-hand with Zach, but also with the council members to my right and to my left, each with their respective significant others, and it felt so wonderful to be in this city that has been so welcoming. And yet, we still, of course, have a lot to do, as I think we all know. Not everybody feels welcomed as part of the LGBTQ+ community, and in many parts of the world, it is still dangerous, and there are people who are still killed to this very day just because of their identity, and we have to change that. And doing things like this makes a big difference to help make that happen. Was mentioned also about the LAPD and how far they have come from the days back of the Black Cat, the Silver Lake gay bar, that there were those who experienced so much discrimination from the LAPD itself, and today, we have opened that up, and we have opened up all of the other departments of the city as well. And such milestones really make a great difference. It's also a reminder that we take—and we should take none of this for granted, especially when you look at what's happening in Washington, D.C. We are, I think, a counterpoint to that, and we will remain a counterpoint to that, and we must do so each and every single day. You're going to hear from my husband, Zach, as we unveil the flag today, but I could not be more proud and more glad and more honored to be here with everybody, and thank you so very, very much, and happy Pride!
We're fighting over who got the chance to introduce you. So it—it occurred to me, as I was thinking about Mike Fewer a few minutes ago, that it—it really is now fashionable for people running for office to talk about how they support the LGBT community, at least here in California. You know, gubernatorial candidates are trying to stress their bona fides, who was their first, who did more, and that's a wonderful, wonderful thing. But there was a time in—in my political lifetime, when I first started working in this building, where that was not the case. It was something that elected officials, even those who might vote supportively, would want to stay quiet about. It was too touchy and too hot-button an issue. And, Mr. Wesson, while you were demonstrating tremendous leadership in Sacramento on LGBT issues, Mr. Fewer, back here in the 1990s, was leading on LGBTQ issues. Just as likely as Jackie Goldberg was Mike Fewer to be introducing and championing the legislation that mattered to this community at a time when that was a risk, at a time when that really deeply mattered to us. And I am incredibly grateful for all the work that Mr. Fewer has done, and I want to thank him and welcome him.
Thank you, Mike. Thank you, Mike. I—my staff will recognize how unusual it was for someone to even implicitly refer to me as being fashionable. That was a good thing. Mr. President, and I—I want to say very specifically, Mr. Bonin, Mr. O'Farrell, Mr. Galperin, and all who are assembled here, what a privilege it is to be able to stand here with you again this year. It's a privilege, and yet, every day, there are these stark reminders of the importance of demonstrating the unity that is being displayed today. Just a few days ago, a sitting member of Congress, not too far away from here, said, you know, "I think it should be okay for a homeowner to be able to refuse to sell his or her home to someone from the LGBT community," right? And then there was the reaction. The realtors said, "You know what? That's a bridge too far. We rescind our support for you." So, you know, that's a sign— —a sign to all—because we watch this very carefully, right? You know, when—when a—an elected official in our nation has a temerity to step and say that, we are wondering, well, who's going to say, "No, that's a bridge too far," quickly? And I think that's today what this is really about. It's true, back in the 1990s, there was no heroism involved. I was reflecting on the experience of my two younger brothers growing up, and what it felt like for them, and reflecting on what it must have felt like to kids throughout the United States, whether they were being rejected for the Boy Scouts or their parents were, or whether they were just wondering whether, when they got to school, they would be so bullied that they would never want to come to school again. All of us, I think, have some experience in our lives that leads us to say, "This is the moment for each of us to stand up and say that we are better than all that," because the best of who we are is being shown right here today. So, you know, and I—I just want to conclude with this, you know, in Los Angeles, we are, of course, justly proud of our colleagues in government who are standing here, of all our colleagues, but those listening should know, the city of Los Angeles, when marriage equality was at stake in the U.S. Supreme Court, led a coalition of cities and counties and organizations throughout the United States in briefing the U.S. Supreme Court in support of marriage equality. When—and it's pending—when the case came before the court, asking whether a business could refuse to do business with somebody because they were LGBTQ, the Masterpiece Cake Shop case, the city of Los Angeles was a leader in the nation, along with other cities and counties around the country, standing up for equality in the business context. When hate crimes remain prevalent in our community, the city of Los Angeles is standing up as a leader to assure all are protected. We're proud of each other here in Los Angeles, and I'm proud to stand here with all of you. Thank you for leading this effort today, guys.
So we're now going to acknowledge some of our honorees. We'll acknowledge the district honorees, and then we're also going to first acknowledge three people who are our citywide honorees. And where is Tamika Butler? There we go, come on up here. A little bit later, I believe, in this meeting, we're going to be voting on a resolution to support a postage stamp for Baird Ruston, who was not only a black civil rights leader, but an LGBT civil rights leader. And he once said that we need, in every community, angelic troublemakers. And I would like to think of you as an angelic troublemaker. You have—most of you have seen and heard from Tamika over the years. There is, in Los Angeles, probably not a more thoughtful and forceful and articulate champion of equity in all walks of life than Tamika. Whether it is transportation, whether it is open space, whether it is criminal justice, whether it is youth sports, Tamika has been a voice, has been an organizer, and has been a champion. Most of you probably know her from her last job, which was Executive Director of the L.A. County Bicycle Coalition. She is now with the Los Angeles Neighborhood Land Trust. Prior to LACBC, she was with the Liberty Hill Foundation, and she, as part of that, was engaged with Brothers, Sons, Selves Initiative, which worked on—on helping issues of—of boys and men of color. She was also involved prior to that with an organization called Young Invincibles, raising the volume of the voices— the volume of the voices of young people and giving them more power in our system. She's done legal aid work. And as part of her work on legal aid, she worked on fair play for girls in sports, making sure that Title IX was enforced and that everyone, young boys, young girls, had an equal opportunity to grow and to thrive and to play. Tamika has been one of the most forceful advocates for equity in Los Angeles. She has brought the conversation to unfamiliar places. She has brought the conversation to places where it has made some people uncomfortable, necessary uncomfortable conversations. And she has become sought nationwide as a speaker because of that. We need to listen to Tamika. We need to heed Tamika, and we need to follow her advice. I have been proud to consider her, from a distance, a teacher and a mentor. I am a better public servant because I have listened to you. And I think we are a better city and a better city council because we have taken a few of the steps that you would like us to take. I also want to acknowledge an upcoming milestone. You are about to be, where did I leave it? There we go. Well, let me give a few other things on your resume. You're also a co-chair of the National Center for Lesbian Rights, worked for Trust South L.A., on the Board of the New Leaders Council, Los Angeles, Lambda Literary Foundation. She also has, I didn't know this until this morning, that you have a J.D. from Stanford Law School, received a BA in Psychology and a BS in Sociology back in Omaha, Nebraska. And she and her wife Kelly live in La Mert Park. But I just want to congratulate you because in another month or two, we are welcoming you into the exciting, exhausting, wonderful world of gay parenthood.
Thank you so much, council member. I just want to make sure my wife heard that you should listen to me. I don't think anybody has ever called me angelic, but I'll take it. It's such an honor to be here. You know, Councilmember O'Farrell, Councilmember Bonin, you guys have been great examples of what it is to be servants and to be leaders who are out and proud in the public eye. It's always great to be at City Hall when I get to just say thank you and not ask for more and not have to criticize. And so, you know, I think when I was growing up as a military kid, traveling all over the world, and ultimately, my parents retired in their hometown of Omaha, Nebraska, I think as a gay, black kid wearing bow ties in Omaha, I constantly felt like I was just suffocating and like I couldn't be free. And, you know, since black folks have been brought to this country, we feel like in so many situations that we're just trying to get free. And I remember when I first told my parents I was gay, my mom stopped talking to me for a year. And when she finally started talking to me again, she said, I'm so sorry, it's just, life is going to be so hard for you because you're black, and now this too. And I just want you to be free and happy and live your life to your fullest potential. And I'm afraid that other people are going to hold you back because of who you are. And I couldn't talk about it because I was so scared of what your life would look like. And, you know, we've come a long way in my family. I went to Stanford because I thought, I'm gay, and I'm black, and I like men's clothes, and everyone calls me sir. I'm not Midwestern at all. I have to get out of here. And so, I came out to California. And when I got here, it was better. It was a place where I could be black and gay at the same time, and it didn't completely blow people's minds. And I met my wife Kelly at a legal conference here in L.A. when I was still living in the Bay Area, and made the best decision of my life, and, you know, made stereotypes of reality, packed up a U-Haul and drove down to L.A. within like a couple of months. And so, it's true what they say about us. And I felt so welcomed in this city. I felt welcomed in this city because this is a city that welcomes people who are so different, who form a tapestry that is beautiful and unique. I've also still felt pretty damn black in this city. And I'll always be black. My mom always tells me, you have two things to do in this life, stay black and die.
Come on.
And anybody who's black has heard that. Thank you, Councilmember Harris-Dawson. So far, I'm doing good. And, you know, being in this city, this is still the city where I've been in restaurants as someone who is trans and been pushed out of the women's bathroom and told I didn't belong there, or I was making people feel unsafe. This is still the city where I was driving downtown on Seventh Street and was pulled over by the police, driving my wife, who was tipsy, home, and where she was asked if she was safe and if she wanted to be in the car with me, and why she would let a man like me drive her car, despite the fact that she continually was saying, that's my wife, that's my wife. This is still a country where trans undocumented women die in custody. This is still a place that is free for so many, but for so many of us, we're still in that constant search of freedom. I'm having my first son on July 4th. And I am super excited and super appreciative to have my best friend by my side, my wife Kelly. But at the end of the day, we're still having a black man born on July 4th who won't truly be free in this country. And so, every day, I will continue to show up, to be my authentic self, to stay black, queer, and keep pushing, keep asking for more, because I'm not abnormal, I'm just me. And I'm important, my life matters. And I will continue to push us to be the city that I think we can be and that all people in Los Angeles deserve. So, thank you.
Mr. O'Farrell, let me just jump in for one second. Mr. Herman came into the chambers disrupting. I'm warning you now, when you speak, we let you speak. This is a very important presentation to us that are in these chambers. I will not allow you to disrupt it. So this is your first and last warning, because you will be removed. Mr. O'Farrell, I'm sorry about that. Back to you.
Thank you, Mr. President. I have the great honor of introducing some important folks who have joined us today, and also the honorees of our colleagues today. I'd first like to welcome our General Manager of the Department of Cultural Affairs, Danielle Brazel, who is here today, out and proud. Also, John Zabo, our City Librarian, out and proud. Mayor Garcetti's Deputy Chief of Staff, Matt Zabo, is here, also out and proud. Our Public Works Commissioner, Commission President Kevin James, also out and proud. We treasure our friendship and relationship with Assistant Chief B. Germala, not out, but an ally. Chief Germala. Also, our liaison with LAPD, out and proud Sergeant, maybe it's Lieutenant, Jules Son. And we have Jeffrey Herr, who is remodeling and refurbishing the Hollyhock House and the, yes, welcome, Jeffrey. Justine Gonzalez, Vice President of the Human Relations Commission, welcome, Justine. And members from the Transgender Advisory Committee, it's council, I always do that, Transgender Advisory Council, Karina Somala. Jasmine Creighton. James Wen. And Gia Oleas. Thank you. Before this presentation began, out in the forecourt, we honored individuals that our colleagues, you, our colleagues, identified. Paul Krikorian's honoree, Hugo Villa, I'm not sure if Hugo is here. He is here. Oh, good. Hugo Villa, please be acknowledged. From Councilmember Bob Blumenfield, honoree Stuart Vaughn. David Ruse, honoree Richard Ioub, Richard. Paul Coretza's honoree, Will Hackner. Councilwoman Nuri Martinez, honoree Michael Collarge. Councilwoman Monica Rodriguez, honoree Captain Peter Casey from Mission Division, LAPD. Councilmember Marquise Harris-Dawson and his honoree Pastor Kurt Thomas. Councilmember Curran Price, the Santee Educational Complex's Gay-Straight Alliance, welcome. And your honorees, Council President Wesson, Shannon Shu, and Mira Jolay.
Okay, Channel 35, yeah.
And Mitch Englander's honoree Serena Loeb. Councilmember Jose Wezar's honoree Eric Solis, and Oliver Alpuche of Downtown L.A., proud. And Joe Buscaino's honoree Gabrielle Maldonado. And Councilmember Gil Cedillo's honoree Harvey Slater. And our City Controller's honoree, Ron Galperin's honoree, Mark Gonzalez. All right. Now, one of our honorees today is a real hero, one of those quiet operators that advocates for people who literally have no voice. Founder and president of Bienestar, Oscar De La O, founded a nonprofit, community-based organization, providing health services and programs for Latinos and underserved communities in nine centers around Southern California, including the one in my district in East Hollywood. Launched in 1989, the group specializes in HIV/AIDS education and awareness, in substance abuse and drug prevention among LGBT Latinos. The programs are based on a culturally relevant peer-to-peer model, fostering a sense of family. For more than three decades, Oscar has been a voice for Latinos affected by HIV and AIDS. When Oscar formed Bienestar, remember, it was 1989. He was working full-time in an accounting office. He would get off work in the afternoon and then work at Bienestar until late in the evening, facilitating groups and workshops and doing administrative work, a real labor of love that he continues to this day. Back then, the center was operating from a crises mentality. He was dealing with people who were infected with HIV and dying of AIDS, also assisting family members who were feeling the guilt of it all. He made those people volunteers and agents of change. In recent years, Bienestar has moved toward a behavioral health organization, offering mental health services to the entire Latino community, not just people affected by HIV and AIDS. Oscar has said that HIV is not a health issue, it's a social justice issue, and driving the epidemic was the stigma, the discrimination, the poverty, and the immigration status. Through pride and love of his community, when almost no one else was really speaking for it, Oscar is connecting people to life-saving care and treatment. And this city, and certainly my district and my constituents that I have the honor of serving, is a better place because of Oscar De La O. We want to thank you, Oscar, for your work in my district and across the city and across
Buenos dias. It has really been a privilege in my life for the last 30 years to be of service. It was initiated in me by my mother, who told me many, many years ago, when I was attending Bancroft and Fairfax High School, that in order to have a fulfilling life, you needed to be of service to others. As I lived in the San Fernando Valley and through Bienestar, that operates four centers in the city of Los Angeles, in the San Fernando, South L.A., East Los Angeles, it is a group of individuals, because I haven't done it by myself, but I have just been given a gift by God to be there, to ask, and people have responded, and we have made that difference in our last 30 years. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Oscar. If I could give a bit of stage direction to Taylor from my staff, I need the certificates for Tamika and for John. And if John Raby could come on up? We can still see you from back there, actually. So colleagues, our final citywide honoree is a very familiar voice and probably a very unfamiliar face to you, John Raby from KPCC, the longtime host of OnRamp. I read recently a quote that "The world is not made of atoms, but of stories." And there is probably no one who knows that and lives that better than John Raby. John worked in public radio for a long time in a variety of different cities. He came here to Los Angeles, and he was one of the morning local hosts on All Things Considered. He was their health and housing reporter for a while. And then in 2006, he began hosting OnRamp. I assume that most of you have at some point heard that program, when it aired on a Saturday afternoon or a Sunday evening, and heard the unique voice and the incredible ability that John has, not just to tell stories, but to let other people tell their stories about the richness and the diversity of the tapestry that is Los Angeles. John doesn't just sit in a studio. OnRamp was, or OffRamp was always out in the neighborhoods. So you may have heard him going out to the San Fernando Valley with Kevin Roderick, trying to fry an egg on a sidewalk. You may have heard him on his last program, playing backgammon in the backseat of his car with Mayor Garcetti. You may have heard him traveling around Los Angeles with another great storyteller, Hugh Houser, and sampling the variety of culture in Los Angeles through different types of donuts. John, like most in public radio, but I think he really is sort of a dean of this art, understands the intimacy of radio and the importance of the atmosphere of sound. So when he would sit with someone on a park bench, talking about a book, you wouldn't just hear a conversation, you would hear the chirping of the birds, you would hear the sounds of the children playing in the background. You would hear not just that story, but you would hear the context of Los Angeles. And I was really bitterly disappointed when I found out that his program was ending and he was taking a new position as a production and promotions director at the station. I was sad because I wasn't going to be hearing his voice every week on that program. I was sad because I wasn't going to be hearing his voice every week on that program. And I actually listened to you, I even listened to KPC during the pledge drives. I sit there in the car and listen to the pledge drives. I listen to KPCC more than most of your coworkers.
You should see something about that.
Yeah, I definitely should. But in his new role, his job is to teach everyone at the station how to tell stories, not the John Raby way, but their way, in a way that really appreciates the people and the neighborhoods of Los Angeles. I'm particularly glad to honor John because it was my husband who actually introduced me to your program when we first started dating. He was a regular listener. I don't know that either of us has ever actually listened to a show from beginning to end, because we catch it in the car, and then you have made each of us considerably late for many different events, because we stay and we listen to the rest of the story or the rest of the show. I also felt a little bit of a connection with John because he met his husband, Julian Bermudez, who's a well-known art curator here in Los Angeles, at an institution that no longer exists, but it was pretty iconic in my youth, the Friendship Bar in Santa Monica Canyon, which was one of the few gay bars outside of the West Hollywood circle. It was a neighborhood bar, and it's where I did some of my best and some of my worst drinking. And they began a romance there, where Julian's friends, I read, warned him not to date you because they thought you were a hustler.
Yes.
A very long hustle, apparently. So, John is an icon and an institution in Los Angeles, and we're blessed, although we lost his voice on a regular basis on the radio, except for those pledge drives, we are blessed that he's taking his talent and nurturing everybody else at what is Southern California's premier news source. So, I'd like to introduce you to someone who has twice won the National Award for Best Local Public Affairs Show, and someone that Frank Stoltz from KPCC has described as the best storyteller in radio, John Raby.
Well, since his name was invoked, I do want to say that I wish that Hugh were here with us today, speaking to you. I'd give up this speech if Hugh would have done it. Thanks very much to the council member. I want to give a shout out to CD One's council member, my council member, Gil Sadio, all the rest of you city officials here who are standing up for human rights. This is a great honor, it's a huge honor, it's very humbling, and it's truly unexpected. And if I'm surprised, I know that some of you are too. City Attorney Fuer, I had meant to tell you, I had meant to come out to you long ago. I know you're shocked. And I get it, I get it. The only tip-off is my impeccable attire. Otherwise, I look about as straight as Mike Pence. And I want to give a shout out too to my husband, Julian Bermudez, who is an amazing art curator and amazing husband. He can't be with us today because he's curating art in Mexico City. I'm really only half joking about the, you know, the not appearing gay part, because compared to most or maybe all of the other honorees and so many other trailblazing queer leaders, I have had a glide path to this honor. While they were out taking real heat, putting themselves in real danger, I've been walking around doing my tall, white, male thing. I bluffed my way to the top of the City Hall Tower and made a YouTube movie from the Lindbergh Beacon. I walked right past security at King Drew Medical Center about 10 years ago and got access to patient records and intensive care units for a minor exposé, and we all know why I could get away with it. Born this way. And when it comes to telling queer stories on the radio, I've been embedded as kind of a spy. There I'd be on OffRamp, telling people about the closing of the Other Side, the last gay piano bar, or interviewing George Takei about coming out, or exploring my friend's place, the Queer Teen Homeless Center in Hollywood. And by the time I mentioned my husband, listeners were hooked, and it was too late to turn back. Julian was just as likely to pop up in un-gay stories like tiki culture, or dining at the Dalrye Supper Club, or going to see the latest movie, or trips to any number of art openings. The way I saw it, it was just as natural for me to mention my husband as any straight reporter making a casual reference to their opposite-sex partner. On the whole, for me, it's been pretty easy. I didn't even know what gay was until college. So, coming out in high school, which would have been very difficult and dangerous in Upper Michigan, was a moot point. My family knew I was gay before I did. They didn't tell me. Might be just as well. And then I went to work in public radio, for God's sakes. We're being gay is practically compulsory. So, that wasn't a problem. Sorry to break it to everybody, but I worked with Terry Gross. She's straight.
Wow.
I know, exactly. I didn't even come out about being, about my big gay life on the radio, primarily to strike a blow for gay rights. Of course, I didn't feel like I should have to compromise my civil rights to keep people comfortable, but I also knew that if I lied about it, like if I changed the pronoun or said "they" or "my special friend" or something like that, listeners would smell the BS right away, and they'd turn the radio off. Listeners want, even if they don't know exactly what it is, they want honesty, they need it. And not to mention that Julian would kick my butt. And I do truly believe that it's in the realm of the mundane that we change the hearts and the minds of the vast majority of people. You can really honestly, and I believe this, you can honestly abhor the most horrible racist outrages and still not want to live next to, you know, a black or a queer couple. You and your children need to see people who are not in the dominant culture doing totally boring things. An African-American family buying school supplies at Target. A lesbian couple cheering for the Dodgers at Dodger Stadium and kissing on the kiss cam. Armenians watching the space shuttle go by. You need to see this in person, in newspapers, on TV, in the movies. The best example is, of course, gay marriage. Here were queer couples in the hundreds of thousands willingly giving up the fabulous life to become part of the most mundane aspect of human existence that you can imagine. "Hey, honey, do we have enough lettuce for dinner tonight?" That's not even close to "I have a dream" in terms of eloquence, but it's the next step toward equality. It's what we want. I learned this when I agreed to let Michelle Mills of the Pasadena Star News do an article about our wedding in 2008. I agreed because I wanted to speak out about gay marriage, but I don't think my sermons on gay marriage convinced any readers. I think what impressed most people about that, it was a three-page spread, it was nuts, about our wedding plans, was how absolutely normal they were. Gay marriage opponents actually complained to the paper. They wrote letters to the editor, and they said, "Why'd you profile them? They were boring." So, no, RuPaul did not marry us on top of the Hollywood sign, and that was exactly the point. It's the same thing within newspapers and newsrooms and, you know, in the news media. The point is not to have adequate representation by female reporters so they can do stories about female CEOs, or black reporters so they can do Black History Month stories, or Latinos who can say, "No, albundigas is soup and abogado is a lawyer." Or gays who can say, "If Von Walker is automatically biased for gay marriage, wouldn't a straight judge be automatically biased against it?" That's not it. The idea is that a monoculture is simply an unhealthy culture. It is de facto discriminatory, but it is also stagnant. A newsroom full of the exact same kind of people, no matter how progressive they are or they think they are, will miss big chunks of the big picture and most of the nuance. So, in other words, it's simply bad journalism. If you miss the story, that's bad journalism, but if you have, but if you have more life experiences embodied in the people in the newsroom, embodied by that highly diverse workforce, you will get the story right far more often. That's good journalism. And by a really wonderful coincidence, a diverse newsroom is also going to come up with better, more exciting stories, and that means a bigger audience. I don't think it's an accident. The KPCC's grown to 900,000 listeners at the same time that our newsroom has become one of the most diverse in the nation, and I'm proud to be a part of it. And lastly, while I'd certainly like to thank again the official city of Los Angeles for this honor, my story might have turned out very differently 18 years ago if I hadn't wound up here in Southern California. And so, I'd like to thank each and every Southern Californian who has so warmly welcomed this Midwesterner to the most wonderful, mixed-up, vibrant, frustrating, rewarding place on earth. I wouldn't live anywhere else. Thank you very much.
Let me have a quick drink.
Oh, nice.
Mr. Bonin and O'Farrell, I do have one speaker on the queue, if I might. He is our own angelic troublemaker, Mr. Paul Coretts.
Well, thank you, Mr. President. I don't think I've ever been described that way, but I'll take it as well. Thank you, Mitch and Mike, for putting this event together. We all appreciate it, and it's great to see this recognition. I thought about this when we had our earlier ceremony, and Stuart Vaughn was talking about being bullied and being made fun of and being called names. When I was in high school in the early '70s, I obviously didn't have to deal with that personally, because I was a straight guy, but I had friends and acquaintances in high school, and I really didn't know how to respond. And I felt guilty, but I didn't do anything. Like our wonderful high schoolers who are here before they leave, I want to recognize them in particular, because they provide a support system to those in high school that don't want to see that happen, and who want to speak up for their LGBT brethren. And so, it's great to see that actually happening. I wish that had been present when I was in high school. I really felt kind of helpless. I didn't know how to respond, and I really didn't stick up for my high school classmates. And that has led me to be somewhat of an LGBT activist ever since. In the early '70s, I supported gay candidates for public office. Now, they weren't openly gay, that was something, at the time, no one ever dreamed would happen. But there were folks like Joel Wax and George Takei for these very few people here that will remember that in 1973, he ran for city council. And I supported the people that I knew were gay, the general public didn't for a while, now that obviously we've had trailblazers like the three of you here in Los Angeles. But I just wanted to thank you for what you're doing at your high school, because I think it is quite remarkable and courageous, and really does a lot for the students at that school, and hopefully, this continues to spread throughout the system and throughout the country. So, thank you for what you do.
To invite Danielle Brazil to step forward to say a little about the cover of the program, the guidebook, and then we'll unveil it. Danielle.
Welcome, Danielle. Always a pleasure.
Thank you so much, and thank you, Councilmember Bonin O'Farrell, and to each member of this city council for your leadership and for creating this important moment of belonging. You know, if you look around this chamber right here, right now, this is Los Angeles. Isn't this extraordinary? There is not one dominant culture, identity here. We are a diverse community, and we celebrate the uniqueness in all that we are in the city of Los Angeles. You know, Heritage Months were created by Mayor Tom Bradley, and it was to acknowledge a contribution by a group, by a culture, that was outside of the dominant culture. It is a value system that we have at play right now, and it started with African-American Heritage Month. So, on behalf of the Department of Cultural Affairs and the city of Los Angeles, I am once again pleased to unveil our 2018 Lesbian, Gay, Bisexual, and Transgender Heritage Month calendar for our city. And it's important that we say each and every one of those words. It's important that we spend this time, that we put it on the official record of our city for the archives. So, when they look back on us in 100 years, they say, "Wow, look at this moment. We're making history, and you get to make history every single day, and you make us proud." So, we get to unveil our publication and our poster, and I get to acknowledge the incredible team of the Department of Cultural Affairs with Will Capertini-Montoya, who creates all of our department's publications with his staff, as well as our graphics teams, Therese and Marcia Harris, Ruben Esparsa at PMAC for producing yet another guide. And finally, I want to recognize our cover artist this year, Mr. Patrick Martson and his colleague Michael Brunt, who I believe is here with us today. Partner, husband, spouse. Husband, it's great to meet you. It's beautiful. So, we would like to have you step over here, so you can pull off. Yes. And I just would like to say that this piece is called True Colors, and it beautifully commemorates the Venice Pride lifeguard tower that Councilmember Bonin will dedicate on June 15th in memory of our beloved council member, Bill Rosenthal, the first openly gay man elected to the city council. One, two, three, ta-da! Ta-da!
We'll tell you one thing, and I'm just going to speak loudly about it. This painting is actually called True Colors, which can be cheesy in its name, but my husband means it's a great talent, and each color is actually from a can of paint, from the colors we did from the lifeguard tower that time. So, this painting and the painting you saw outside, so it's really special how it's done. We really encourage you to come out and see one of the first landmarks, one of the most notable landmarks for the LGBT community, and go out there on a sunny day and see what makes it special.
Our Heritage Month calendar and cultural guide is being passed out, and it can be accessed online at culturela.org.
So, Mr. President and colleagues, we have one last flourish. We are going to end with something big, and I mean that quite literally. We have seen a depiction of True Colors, which is, you see it at the video at the beginning of each of these council deliberations. Those colors are so vitally important to the LGBT community, and they reflect the rainbow flag. And Gilbert Baker, who designed that flag, died about a year ago. And starting in Los Angeles, Friday morning, we are going to be unveiling, at Venice Beach, not very far away from that lifeguard tower, the largest, the world's largest free-flying flag here in Los Angeles, and it is that rainbow flag. Bring it out. This is going to fly first in Los Angeles before it goes around the world. It'll next go to San Francisco for the rainbow flag's 40th anniversary, then Paris and London, Berlin, Vancouver, Sydney, Miami, and Tokyo, and in 2019 in New York City to honor the 50th anniversary of the Stonewall uprising and for the 2019 World Pride celebration. So, this is a huge benefit and gift for Los Angeles. It begins here, it ends at Stonewall, and it should begin here, because Black Cat happened before Stonewall, as Ron noted. And we want to start this right. So, before we unveil it Friday, we want to start this with a blessing and a spiritual note, and there is nobody that we can think of better to do that than Rabbi Zach Shapiro. note, and there is nobody that we can think of better to do that than Rabbi Zach Shapiro.
Thank you so much for this honor, and to my husband, Ron, to the entire Los Angeles City Council. I bring to you a greeting from Temple Akiba of Culver City. This flag is a symbol of unity. This flag is a trademark of freedom. This flag is a beacon of light. This flag is a statement of our rights. This flag is a reminder of our responsibilities. This flag is a badge of honor. This flag is a seal of pride. This flag is a eulogy to the LGBTQ trailblazers who enabled us to be here today. This flag is a baby bassinet, inspiring the leaders of tomorrow. This flag is both the great unified voice, as well as the tiny individual threads, each with one historic story. May the divine prism of light emanating from this flag shine upon our souls with the courage to stand up for justice, with conviction to stand out when bigotry offends, and compassion to stand in when any fabric of our society faces darkness. May this flag and the people who fly it lead us all toward harnessing unity, goodness, and hope. Amen.
One more round of applause, and let's... Thank you all so very much for coming. Okay, Ms. Rodriguez.
Thank you, Mr. President. Colleagues today, and I asked Tamika to join me, because I thought her remarks were particularly relevant and poignant to what we're going to be discussing today. And I also want to acknowledge my friends from Stonewall that have joined us here today in honor of this resolution. Sean, Lauren, and Marcus, thank you for being here today with me. But colleagues, this item is a resolution in support of issuing a commemorative postage stamp to recognize Bayard Rustin. Rustin was a civil rights leader who led the journey of reconciliation, an early version of the Freedom Rights, to challenge racial segregation on interstate buses, and he worked closely with Dr. Martin Luther King as the chief organizer of the 1963 March on Washington. In 2013, President Obama posthumously awarded Rustin the Presidential Medal of Freedom, and remarked how Rustin had been denied his rightful place as a civil rights icon because he was openly gay. It is fitting that we hear this item today in council at the beginning of LGBTQ Heritage Month, and a timely reminder that our work for full inclusion is far from over. LGBTQ Heritage Month is a way for us to recognize the successes and ongoing struggles of the LGBTQ members of our community, and that they continue to face. And I want to thank Stonewall Democratic Club for being here today, and for their advocacy, and the National LGBTQ Task Force for their activism and continued efforts to honor Bayard Rustin's legacy. And again, when we talk about the struggles that are being endured by so many allies in the LGBTQ community, I think it's also exemplified by what you said today, and was so honest and true, that this duality of the struggle in identity, and the challenges that are exemplified even by people of color in the LGBT community is real. And I want to thank you for your advocacy and your friendship, and again, you know, Tamika, I think it's just incredibly powerful to have you here today, in recognition of the legacy of this civil rights leader, and I think, you know, there are so many individuals that emulate that. But again, I want to thank you colleagues for your, for those that, so many of my colleagues that seconded this motion in commemoration of this important, iconic civil rights leader. And I want to thank my friends who are here today in joining me in support of this important acknowledgement of history. Thank you.
Okay, I'd like to recognize Mr. Harris Dawson.
Thank you so much, Mr. Chair, and thank you so much, Councilwoman Rodriguez, for bringing this important issue to the LA City Council. The legacy of Bayard Rustin is a big deal, and it's a big deal that we acknowledge, and we acknowledge it in public. Like many people, I learned about Bayard Rustin as a child, as being a hero of the civil rights movement, except no one ever mentioned that he was gay. Until recent years, the stories have not come out. There's a story that I like to remember about this city, when the Democratic National Convention came to Los Angeles in 1960. Martin Luther King and the SCLC were set to picket the Coliseum and to try to stage a big protest at the convention, and it was Adam Clayton Powell, a Christian minister, and another civil rights leader himself, who threatened to out Martin Luther King and Bayard Rustin if they went ahead with the protest. And so, we had the convention here, and there was no protest. I tell that story, because when we tell history, a lot of times, we tell it as if it's smooth, and it just rolls through. But there are bumps and struggles along the way, and this is one of the important ones. I'm glad that we're over this mark. I'm glad to honor Bayard Rustin today. So, thank you, Ms. Rodriguez.
All right, well said. Okay, Ms. Rodriguez has requested that, on this item, I reopen the public hearing, so I think we want to do that. So, let's get Marcus, is it Lauren, Sean, come on up if you would. Just identify yourself and welcome.
Okay, thank you so much. I am Marcus Lovinggood, and I'm a Stonewall Dems Committee Chair, and I host this podcast called Stonewall Spotlight that helped bring this to light. Thank you, Councilwoman Rodriguez, for the invitation and opportunity to address you all this morning. Optics really matter. In 2008, a mixed African-American man who looked kind of a lot like me became President of the United States. It was that moment that I realized that my preconceived societal limitations that were placed on my dreams had been lifted, and I was finally free to reach the stars. Optics really matter. Without freedom riders like Bayard Rustin, leaders like Dr. Martin Luther King Jr. would never have been able to pave the path so that somewhere down the line, some brown gay man like me could stand before you here today, and possibly be president one day. Thank you so much.
Thank you. Thank you for coming. Next speaker, please identify yourself.
Sean Kaloggi, I'm Communications Vice President of Stonewall and editor-in-chief of the podcast where we brought attention to this issue. I think in these challenging times, one area where we found hope is through protest, peaceful protest. People have marched on Washington for greater female representation, for safety in our schools, for gun control. In a time when there are all too many bullets and gunshots, what speaks louder than those gunshots is the voices of activists of the Black Lives Matter movement, of trans women who are organizing and demanding justice in the face of brutality. This is Bayard Rustin's legacy. Through his civil rights activism, he showed that nonviolent protest can get results, and he did this through his March on Washington, and through numerous times when he was civilly disobedient, and when he even got arrested. So, thank you for helping us recognize Bayard Rustin's legacy. It's his time.
Thank you. Hi, and identify yourself.
Good morning, everybody. My name is Lauren Bousson. I'm from Stonewall Democrats. I want to thank Councilmember Rodriguez for bringing this forward. Getting Bayard Rustin his stamp is really, really important to me. I think he is underappreciated, because he didn't seek the spotlight so much when he was with us, but as President Obama said, in giving Rustin the posthumous Medal of Freedom, he has been one of the greatest architects for civil justice in our time. Without Bayard Rustin, there is no March on Washington. Bayard Rustin, on his first trip to Los Angeles, was on his way here to guard the homes of intern Japanese-Americans. He didn't make it, because he was arrested for not giving up his seat years before Rosa Parks. He deserves a stamp. Let's get him his stamp. Let's give Bayard Rustin his due, and celebrate the intersectionality that was a part of his life and a huge part of his legacy. I thank you for your attention to this matter.
No, thank you all, and to the three of you, well said. Okay, if I could get Ms. Ramirez, Mr. Walsh. Mr. Walsh passes. Mr. Herman?
Good morning, ladies and gentlemen. I think this needs to be said. God bless. I just spoke to the African-American gentleman, Mr. Simon, from the Disability Commission. He knows me, and we've had a lot of extensive conversations about, you know, many things. But on the topic of gays and lesbians, I have to tell you one thing. I have been victimized, attacked, and violated, and bullied all the time by gays and lesbians and trans.
And Mr. President, this doesn't seem to relate to you.
No, you got to stay on the subject, Ms. Ramirez. Ms. Ramirez.
We need to dissent. We need to expose the other side of the gays and lesbians.
Okay, thank you, Ms. Ramirez. Okay, cut her time. Thank you. Sergeant, show her to her seat. Please, quickly. No, you're not on topic. You're disrupting the meeting. You're not on topic. This is your last warning. Mr. Herman?
This is civil rights protest. This is how we do business in the United States. We establish positions regarding postage stamps in honor and memory of all true Americans, which I salute. Hoorah! And to the motherfuckers who can't cope with Americans and our civil rights, today we have a postage stamp honoring advocacy. We, the advocates, bring honor, disgrace, criticism, in all respects to what we believe in: 42 U.S.C., 1983, and the Ralph M. Brown Act, 54950 E.T.S.E.Q. Fuck you! So, in response, thank you, America.
Mr. Spindler?
Yeah, so normally, I don't know if I'd support this, but usually, we support Monica Rodriguez's motions, and today, we're going to get a stamp. A stamp for somebody that's dead. Yes, that's right. We never give a stamp to anybody alive. They always have to be fucking dead. We need to do stamps for alive people. And it's too late, because Mr. Rustin will not be here today to say fuck you for waiting so long to honor his memory of what he's done. It took all of this time, plus being in the ground, nothing but worm food in the fucking ground, to finally get a stamp. A fucking stamp is all you get. You don't get a name of a building. Name this building after him, you racist motherfuckers. Yes.
Thank you. Thank you. Your time is up. Mr. Sadio?
I just want to commend Monica Rodriguez for bringing this before us. As you know, my interest in the past as an organizer, as a union leader, I studied Bayard Rustin, and he was a consummate organizer. He was an ally of Martin Luther King. Not only would we not have had the March on Washington without his efforts, but I think in many respects, his organizing skills helped define much of the civil rights movement, because he was the consummate organizer. He was the person that was brought in when many of these marches and expressions of nonviolence had to be brought forth. He was openly also a socialist. He was a pacifist. He was an advocate for nonviolence. And he is much deserved of this honor, and so I thank you for bringing this to our attention. These stamps are so significant, because they are signals of inclusiveness, and the optics matter, as the young man said earlier. The optics matter when people are seen, they see themselves on television and media, and hear themselves on the radio, and when they see themselves on a stamp. It is so significant, because it means that the entirety of who they are is now part of who we are. They become part of our fabric of a nation, and we are working so hard to make sure that that fabric includes all strands. So, I thank you, Mr. President, and thank you, Monica, for bringing that to our attention.
Okay, let's prepare to vote on this issue. Let's open the roll, close the roll, tabulate the vote.
14 ayes.
Okay, Ms. Richardson, you want to come forward? Jacqueline Richardson? Mr. Walsh, John Walsh, you have items 32, 34, 35, 36, 37. You can begin to make your
John Walsh, HollywoodHighlands.org. This nauseating bout of self-congratulations is over. And I'd like to point out that you celebrated Ramadan. You know what happens if you get caught in an Arab country?
And we're not actually on any agenda items. Maybe you should save these comments for the general public comment, Mr. Walsh.
General public comment. Yes, suck cock in an Arab country.
No, let's go to general public comment.
See what happens.
Let's give him his one minute.
Okay. I don't need any.
Okay, go ahead, your general public comment.
All I need is my one minute. You are honoring Ramadan twice, for the first day and the last day. Where are the, where are the rabbis? Do they get paid off? Do the Jew rabbis get paid off by the Muslims? I'm telling you right now, cocksucking, cocksucking is a crime punishable by death, by death, and you're sucking the cocksuckers' cocks. I'm telling you right now. All these cocksuckers that were up here, they should be protesting Ramadan. The second Ramadan day, we're taking it off. How about three days for Ramadan? How about three days for Ramadan? How about Ramadan coming in here and taking all of the cocksuckers on this board, including the ones on, and holding them up for you, cocksuckers?
Ms. Richardson, please come forward.
This is for the children. It's maybe they would be interested in visiting the Brat Museum near the Music Center. They have excellent exhibits for them. It's for families and children. There's one exhibit that represents those little balloons that they quickly tie them up and turn them into poodles and hearts and all. They have an exhibit of that type there. It weighs 2,000 pounds. It's made of metal, and it looks just like one of those balloons. They say it's, it's as big, it weighs as much as a bus. They also have, within that group, they have an exhibit of a table about this big, about, well, it's an overlifeside table that the children might be interested in. It's a good, clean place for the children to go, and they'll probably feel very comfortable there. I've brought you six brochures, if anybody's interested in them.
Thank you.
Can I give out the brochures?
Yes, Sergeant, if you would take the brochure. Okay, let's go, Ms. Ramirez. She has two minutes and then general public comment. You can speak on thirty-two, thirty-four, or thirty-seven.
One moment, please. Let me open the page. God, they don't even give you that. Thirty-four. Pilot safety is a priority, but the study of the health impacts inside the aircraft from two to sixteen hours should be conducted first and then study the health impact outward. However, the health impact from high-powered military jets and commercial airlines, i.e. Boeings and choppers, and private aircrafts are riveting, exciting, and still full-thrusting energy with improvement of brain function and synaptic nerve connections pulsating with high electrical energetic vibrations that recharge your bodies and tingle you from head to toe with a dynamic sense of euphoria and health dynamism. The power thrust of these aircrafts could wake up the dead. So, I say to all the pilots, let er rip. And then pilots, again, pilots are no pussies. They got balls and they are the whole package. They got brains and body, man. These guys are studs. God bless our pilots. Oh, hold us back. All the women are drooling over your asses.
Now, we seem to have gone off topic, Ms. Ramirez, or, Mr. President.
Number thirty-seven. Coangga Boulevard is tropically dried up and ugly. You got too many junkies and wetbacks and gangbangers, so please, clean up that city. It's a dead cesspool of crap. Deport the gangbangers and the wetbacks and put water in that whole town. It's a cesspool. It's cockroach-infested disgusting shit.
I don't think we're on an agenda item, Mr. President.
Yeah, why don't we give her her one minute for general public comment so she can say whatever she likes.
Did we forget number thirty-two, sir? Or am I being censored?
No, you're not being censored. You got, go ahead, general public comment.
Oh, well, Los Angeles stinks. It is ferociously unsafe. Crime is astronomical. You are, you have financial crimes, property crimes, and personal crimes to your person. And again, ladies and gentlemen, middle-class America is in poverty and homeless, and our beloved military veterans and their family members are committing suicide on a daily basis. So, again, and not to mention, we got a drug and narcotics epidemic, and we can all thank these goddamn unpatriotic, un-American assholes, Eric Garcetti, Antonio Villarigosa, Jerry Brown, and City Attorney Michael Fewer, among many others. But I say, what we need is President Rodrigo Duterte of the Philippines and President from Russia, Putin. We need them to execute FBI, the fucking FBI, the fucking CIA, the fucking NSA, and the Department of Homeland Security. Fuck them. Shoot them. Shoot these fucking agents, their families, and their children. Torture them. Put them through gang stalking and let them know how it is.
Thank you. Thank you. So, now, Mr. Previn, thank you, thank you, thank you. Mr. Previn, Mr. Previn, you, of course, at the end will have your general public comment. You have item one, thirty-two, thirty-four, thirty-five, thirty-six, and thirty-seven. Mr. Previn, the floor is yours.
Thank you, sir. It's Eric Previn on LGBTQ Month. Congratulations to all the honorees. Item one, sir, is in your area. It's the, I believe it's Carl Lawton, who at 8,500 Venice was caught, I've never seen so many violations. He's trying to have people living in the area, in his place. There's some restaurant parking component, and so we're getting him for 3,700. But, you know, in a homeless crisis, I just want to emphasize again, when you get people for creating a spot to live, sleep, cook, and dine without a permit, you know, maybe we need to revisit that, but we're good. Item number thirty-three is the mayor's veto. So, I just think that the ITA group's budget might need to be examined if we're going to continue to reduce members of the public.
We're actually not taking comment on that since there is no veto to speak to.
That's fine. Thirty-five is the Laurel Canyon Association, and David Rue is doing a nice thing. He's helping them with some slope repair. I didn't realize Jamie Hall was the head of that association. That's impressive because he's one of the attorneys who occasionally keeps you in compliance. So, that was just an interesting little update. Item thirty-six, you've got some meter revenue generation coming off of a property that transferred from GSD to LA DOT, you know, after October 2017 when you made arrangements with Metro. So, it's more parking for pay, hopefully at a rate that is affordable, because once again, the safer parking component to your city plan is woefully inadequate. We need to find a place because, as we've said many times before, 60% of the homeless folks are not organic, you know, mental health-challenged people on the street. They're people who just can't afford to live here. So, keep your eye on that. Item thirty-four, Ms. Ramirez will be happy to hear, we're getting some FAA studying going, and I assume they're also going to look at the value of the chopper pilots, but they want to make sure that LA is included in the study of many airports across America as they see about the harmful impacts of airports, you know, of planes flying low below 10,000 feet. So, that's of note. Thirty-seven, if Mr. Rue could identify which neighborhood council he's, their $10,000 was used to fix up something on Coangga, beautify it, but then the contractor failed to perform, so now it's kicking back into his fund. That's a great trick. A lot of other neighborhood councils would like to use it too, to save that money, because as you know, you have a weird done, the Department of Neighborhood Empowerment program, where you, you limit the opportunity to spend the money unless it's all approved by a certain date, and then it doesn't roll over like all your money rolls over. So, that's a problem. And item number, I think that concludes the items. I'd be happy to go into my general public comment.
Okay, Mr. Previn, give us a second. Go ahead.
So, June 5th is election day, and I'll give you an opportunity to vote for Eric Previn, third district supervisor. I won't belabor the point. I think you know what I stand for. I will say that you got two standards here on LGBTQ Month. You got the folks who are honored, who are deeply moving, and so the speakers at item thirteen as well. But you'll note that the size discrepancy, hashtag Blooming Fields knows. We got to fix that, sir. It's your legacy, and I don't think we want you or Mayor Garcetti to be known as the people who reduce ordinary members of the public to nothing while celebrating civil rights. Now, I love celebrating civil rights. I found Bayard Rustin's story moving, and I feel badly for the guy from Stonewall Spotlight because he should have been seen when he said, "Someone who looks just like me," and we couldn't even see what he looked like. Finally, in 10 seconds or less, media matters, and there's been a lot of blaming suicide on, you know, whether it's Uber in New York, taxi drivers are killing themselves, or there's another case where the guy who burned himself in New York, and it was apparently from climate change. We got to look into really getting sick yet.
Thank you, Mr. Previn. Thank you very much. Okay, if we could bring up Mr. Spindler and then Mr. Herman? Okay, they have two minutes, and in fact, I have on my screen now, Mr. Herman. So, let's wait once.
You want to take Mr. Herman first?
In fact, Mr. Spindler, I have your items here. You have one, thirteen, thirty-two, thirty-five, and thirty-seven, so you can begin.
All right. Yes, so go ahead. No, on item number one, fuck liens. We don't need any more of these fucking liens. And I know I see it enough. And what breaks my heart as a puppet is seeing that Monica Rodriguez has a lien on 1A. Monica promised, no, 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 no more liens, so she needs to get rid of that lien immediately to keep her campaign promises, not to be a Herb Wesson, yes. So, now, we turn to the other shit. Hurry up, turn the fucking pages.
I'm trying.
Turn, turn, turn the page.
On the subject.
Yeah, turn the fucking page. All right.
Go ahead.
All right, so this bullshit on thirty-two, something about technical corrections. Please do not listen to Mike Fewer's legal advice on thirty-two because he's going bald, so we don't want that to happen. So, no on thirty-two. Thirty-four, fuck number thirty-four, but we already spoke on it, right? Huh, caught you, Mr. Fobble. You're asleep, asshole. Now, thirty-five, Crescent Drive, fuck Crescent Drive. $130,000 for what? David Rue's golfing partners up there for the slope? You could just take that slope, shove it up his rapist ass. No on number thirty-four. Then we get to thirty-six. See, again, I caught Mr. Fobble sleeping. Now, thirty-six, turn the fucking page. General services for parking lots. No more parking lots. The last time we had a parking lot was in Koreatown, and the terrorist Herb Wesson turned it into a homeless shelter, so no more of that shit. And then thirty-seven, Coangga Boulevard. Yes, we love Coangga Boulevard. We can't stand Paul Krikorian, but we love Coangga Boulevard.
Come on, you're, give him his one minute.
Yeah, so I was out yesterday, and I saw something deeply disturbing about our city attorney, Mike Fewer. He's got an AIDS-bald spot on the top of his head. I just can't believe it. And usually, it's been my experience that normally...
I don't see how this is in the subject matter jurisdiction at city, Mr. Spindler.
Usually, when you get...
Mr. Spindler?
I'm just saying, usually, it's been my experience, when I see somebody get sodomized by a bald gay man, usually they become bald in that same pattern.
Again, we're not...
Thank you, Mr. Spindler. You got to talk on something the city has something to do with.
I can't talk about the city attorney being bald, really?
Okay, your time is up. Thank you. Okay, come on, Mr. Herman. Sergeant, show Mr. Spindler his feet.
You were taking pictures of him to hide the bald spot with city funds on Channel 35, and I can't talk about it.
Please take your seat, Mr. Spindler. Come on, Mr. Herman. Mr. Herman, Mr. Herman, you have, I think he has two minutes, and he has item, you can continue to disrupt Mr. Herman's time if you'd like. Mr. Herman, you have item one, thirty-two, four, thirty-five, thirty-six, and thirty-seven. You have two minutes.
So, now that we have an understanding about liens, fuck the liens. And why do I say that? Because most folks don't know that you can come in here and protest and raise the charge that the city of Los Angeles has violated your constitutional right to enjoy your property. 42 U.S.C., 1983, as I mentioned in the beginning, fuck you, is your right to protest. Now, if you look at item B in item one, one and only person in CD 10, South Tremaine Avenue, fuck you for your lien. Then I go to item E. Not for Alec and Herb, but for 8,500 West Venice Boulevard, why the stupid motherfuckers are putting a $4,000 lien against the public. Fuck you too, on behalf of that resident, and I demand that you hold the item until there is public concern addressing this. You got it, rookie? Then I go to the back of this booklet to item thirty-five. Rode funding for a slope failure. Well, what the fuck is a slope failure? A slope failure is a mountainside coming down. Mountainside coming down. So, who do you hire out of consul LLC, Arash Hompoor, and Yosani Farzad? Because fucking Krikorian no longer represents legal liability. He's a legal asshole with no contract under LLC to represent the reason behind city right of ways. You violate our constitutional right of public entity under 42 U.S.C. 12131 of a public entity.
Okay, thank you. Let's give him his one minute for general public comment.
So, my concern today is this. You can be as gay as you want, but God hates homosexuality, period. Fuck you, Mr. City Attorney. That's my right and my fucking opinion. And if that bald motherfucker, City Attorney, your boss, steps in here recognizing things that are against the Jewish tradition, it is those motherfuckers that killed Christ and stuck him to a fucking tree. But in regards to Hompoor, H-O-M-A-N-P-O-U-R, Mr. Krikorian, who represents what? Legal consul, where? Upstairs in room 1040, or 1060, or 1010? Fuck you too, Krikorian. You don't represent shit. You don't represent me. Fuck you and fuck your representation as a fucking fake consulman and to all the other fucking bald assholes like Weezer.
Thank you. Thank you. Okay, let's go to general public comment. Do we have Jesse? General public comment. Is there someone here named Jesse? Okay, so that concludes City Attorney, our general, and our multi. Mr. Clerk, I think we can vote on, let's vote on item one.
And, Mr. President, for item one, the Department of Building and Safety recommends that item 1A be continued to June 29, 2018, that 1C be received and filed in as much as the lien has been paid in full, that item 1D be received and filed in as much as the lien amount was rescinded by the department, and that the lien amount for item 1A be reduced to $2,532.10 in as much as the lien was partially rebuilt by the department, and lastly, that item 1B be confirmed.
Okay, so let's vote on the remaining. Let's open the roll. Close the roll. Tabulate the vote.
Twelve ayes.
Now, let's vote on items thirty-two, thirty-four, thirty-five, thirty-six, and thirty-seven. Please, open the roll. Close the roll. Tabulate.
Twelve ayes.
And, Mr. President, there's been a request to send item thirty-two forthwith, sir.
Okay, without objection, so ordered. Mr. Clerk, that brings us where?
Mr. President, council has motions for posting and referral.
They are posted. They are referred. Announcements, members? Why don't we all rise for adjourning motions? I'm looking to Ms. Martinez's side. No adjourning motions over there. I'm looking to, okay, Mr. Buscayeno.
Thank you, Mr. President. I would ask that my Wattsfield deputy, John Jones III, join me on this tremendous loss to the Watts community colleagues. Father Jesus Morales Vela, born in Los Angeles on May 19, 1962, and son of Jesus Vela and Juanita Morales, ordained as a Catholic priest in 1998, received a bachelor's of science from Cal State Los Angeles. He then received a master of divinity from the Graduate Theological Union in Berkeley. And after his ordination, Father Jesus was sent to the old mission, San Juanes in Solvang, to serve as an associate pastor. He then made his way to Watts to become the associate pastor at St. Lawrence of Brindisi in Los Angeles, where he would be, become the lead pastor, also served as a chaplain for the Los Angeles Police Department, and died suddenly on May 25. Father Jesus offered so much joy and kindness and hope to so many people in his lifetime, particularly in the Watts community, and always demonstrating a loving zeal for the poorest of the poor. He lived the gospel life with selfless dedication and love. His mother, father, and older brother Alfred have gone before him. He's also survived by his brother and sister Juan, Alberto, Daniel, Isabel, Ernesto, and Oscar. A tremendous loss for the Watts community. May Father Jesus rest in peace. Thank you.
Well done. Any other adjourn, Mr. Harris Dawson?
Thank you so much, Mr. President and members. I asked today that we adjourn in the memory of Bishop C. Garnett Henning, Sr. He passed away on Wednesday, May 23rd. He was known internationally as a passionate religious leader and human rights advocate. His legacy here in the city of Los Angeles included serving as the pastor of Ward AME from... from nineteen seventy-two to nineteen eighty, where he moved the ministry beyond the church walls to establish multiple community outreach and social service programs under the Ward Area Redevelopment Department. Folks might remember at
Stop for a second. Sergeants, remove Mr. Herman.
And just in case the recording wasn't picking that up, Mr. Herman was very obviously deliberately making his squeakers make noise as he walked down the aisle, disrupting the adjourning motion.
Mr. Herman, you know what you did, Mr. Herman, and that's just the most disrespectful thing that you can do. Go on and continue to curse and continue to disrupt this meeting, because that's exactly what you're doing. Yeah, why don't you just leave, Mr. Herman? We'll find a place for you outside in the conference room. Thank you. Thank you. Thank you. Thank you, Mr. Herman.
Still shouting.
I am so sorry, Mr. Harris Dawson, but we should not allow these guys to disrupt us when we're standing to show our respect and appreciation for those who've lived a life of giving. So if you could continue.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. I'll begin again and ask that we adjourn in the memory of Bishop C. Garnett Henning, Senior, who passed away May twenty-third. He's internationally known as a passionate religious leader and human rights advocate. His legacy here in Los Angeles included being the pastor of the Ward AME Church from nineteen seventy-two until the eighties. Folks might remember, it's appropriate at this moment, to mark the time when the, many of our mental health hospitals were closed, and that was the first sort of outbreak of homelessness that we, has now come to full bloom. Ward AME was the first church to open up their basement as a shelter there in the USC neighborhood. He was appointed by Mayor Tom Bradley on two occasions to the Los Angeles Housing Commission. He served as president and chairman of the board for two terms of the Southern Christian Leadership Conference. Before being at Ward AME, he was an assistant at First AME Church. After retiring from Ward AME, he played a role in the International Church. He led an effort to raise three million dollars to rebuild AME facilities after Katrina in New Orleans, and was appointed by President Clinton to the National Bush-Clinton Katrina Fund. They were responsible for raising over seventy million dollars, built several churches and hospitals and schools on the continent of Africa during his time here. He was a very close associate of Bishop, or Dr. Cecil Chip Murray, and, Mr. President, was a member of Alpha Phi Alpha fraternity. He is survived by his wife, Ernestine, his daughter Carmen, and two grandchildren. We buried him last week at First AME Church.
And in fact, if you could make that a three signature. Mr. Buscayeno?
Thank you. One last one, Mr. President. That was handed to me by my team here. Another sudden death experienced by the CD-15 family. Phil Tondreau, who passed away suddenly at the age of seventy-two, was a resident in Long Beach who dedicated his life to making his community a better place to live and work, was Southern California Regional Manager for West Trek Marinas, and was responsible for the management of Cabrillo Marina Way in San Pedro. Retired from the city of Los Angeles after thirty-five years of service as Director of Property Management for the Port of Los Angeles. At the port, his duties entailed the management of all commercial and retail leases in the port, which included overseeing the leases with fourteen privately-owned marinas. Mr. Tondreau is a board member of the San Pedro Chamber of Commerce and was a dedicated member of the San Pedro business community. Phil had held masters in both history and public administration from Cal State University in Long Beach, where he graduated with honors. He is survived by his loving wife Corla and daughter Alexis. His wealth of knowledge about real estate, the Port of Los Angeles operations, made him a huge asset to the port communities. His passing is a big loss to us all. He was a dear friend to many and will truly be missed. May he rest in peace. Thank you.
Thank you. Any more adjourning motions? Seeing none, this meeting is adjourned.